Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We are going to call our meeting to order and welcome everyone to our May 12th meeting of the School Board of St. Lucy County. At this time, if everyone would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with justice for all. And now, our Kids at Home pledge. As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skill, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. Well, good morning again, everyone. At this point, Mr. Superintendent, I will turn it over to you for our special presentations.
Okay, thank you, and good morning to everybody. First off, we have Tom Jones is going to give us an update on the foundation's efforts and their activities and what they've been doing in response to the COVID-19. So take it away, Tom.
Can't hear Tom.
Can't hear him.
I can't hear him.
All right, thank you, Mrs. O'Leary. I thank you, Madam Chair, board members, and Mr. Superintendent for this opportunity to update all of you on the activities of the Education Foundation. Once COVID-19 reached St. Lucy County in early March, the Education Foundation had two major goals. Our first goal was to remain relevant to the school district by supporting the rapidly evolving needs of our schools, teachers, and students. Secondarily, we wanted to continue our existing core programs. In early March, we initiated a laptop drive, and I'm proud to state that we've now raised close to $50,000. As of this date, we have ordered 132 laptops, and we plan to reorder more laptops soon. The laptops will be loaned to the school district on a permanent basis. I'd also like to thank our major donors so far, Children's Services Council, Bank of America, and Wells Fargo. We've also received many donations from the public, and we're very grateful for their support. We also received a donation from Flora Power and Light of nearly 80 iPads, and these iPads will be used in a high-need school. I'd like to thank Mr. O'Leary and Lydia Morton for their support of this effort. So our fundraising efforts continue, and we'll be ordering more laptops soon. This year, we focused on our... This year earlier, the foundation focused on our homeless students. We now support our homeless students by helping the school district raise funds to feed families and students. We supported a fundraiser earlier this year, and we learned the school district were using the funding to feed our hungry homeless students. So the foundation reached out to benefactors just last month, and we raised an additional $2,000 to provide meals to help the Fort Pierce... I'm sorry, to help our homeless students. This is through the help of the Fort Pierce Women's Club. We're also dedicated to continuing our core mission-driven programs. Our student scholarship program is still continuing. In fact, this Friday, the judging ends, and then we'll announce the awarding of 100... I'm sorry, or the awarding of 60 scholarships. We received a total of 100 applications. The scholarships this year will total $53,500. And even though the ceremony is canceled, we'll post the winners on our website and recognize our donors through social media. We've also been stepping up our grant writing as we look to the summer and the new school year. We're working with the school district also on a new early literacy program focused on kindergarten classrooms. This program is called Play for Purpose, and it brings back the time-tested concept of purposeful play. And the foundation, along with our team from the school district, has been giving presentations to donors. And I'd like to thank Dr. Wild and her staff for the hard work and the skills that they have in creating this program. Also to date, we're looking to reschedule the fund run in the fall and still hold our annual meeting in November and still work on our Hall of Champions ceremony. So during the 2019-20 school year, we donated record funds for teacher grants. We sponsored Night of the Stars, and we're continuing with student scholarships. And I'd like to thank the school board and Mr. Gent for all of your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And Madam Chair, that really completes all of the special orders of business for today. I'll have other comments under my report to give to the board.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Is Mr. Freeland in the audience to give a report?
Madam Chair, I am indeed here. Hopefully, you can hear me. It took a lot to get in.
Welcome.
Thank you. After all that, I actually don't have a real report, just to say that we're continuing to work with the district, you know, dealing with all of the, I guess you'd call it, issues with COVID, because we're still not, you know, through with this yet. And I appreciate, again, the collaborative nature of that work. We're really, having talked to my colleagues around the state, we're really in a good place here in St. Lucy with the work that we're doing. And, you know, I look forward to having a full report about our negotiations at the next board meeting. Thank you.
Well, we thank you for being in attendance and for your words that I agree with you. And we look around the state, we are in good shape here in St. Lucy County. Thank you for your efforts, and that as well. Anyone from CWA for a report? Okay, seeing or hearing none, we will move then to our consent agenda. Board members, I would entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
I said move, accept it.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Superintendent, we have your recommendation, please.
I recommend approval of the consent agenda as submitted.
Thank you. Board members, you've heard the recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I'm hearing an echo with you, Ms. Hawley.
Well, I'm only on audio because I don't have internet, and maybe because of that.
Anybody else getting an echo?
Yeah, yes, it's an echo. They're working on it.
Okay.
Yes. For the adoption or for the recommendation, or both? Okay.
Carol. I think I did both. I don't know.
Ms. Henson, you made the recommendation to accept the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
I second it on both.
Dr. Mills, did you make the rec?
I seconded on both.
Okay. Ms. Henson, did you make both motions?
Yes.
Okay. We're clear on that now? Okay. We then will move on to our report.
All right. I hope everybody can hear me, and I apologize, we've had some glitches this morning. The first one we did a month ago was flawless. Today, we've had some glitches, so we'll make sure that that's taken care of the next time. Maybe we'll be in a different phase so we can have more people together. But appreciate the opportunity, and we've got a little bit... We're gonna have a presentation here in a few minutes, so I want to make sure that if I don't... If you can't hear me or see me, or particularly just hear me, then say something. But if you can, then I think we're fine. Terrence, is everything good on your end?
Yeah, we can hear you in the boardroom, and Ms. Hawley can hear you, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So what we want to do is cover a couple of things, really with under a topic of returning to school guidelines and talk about summer school and some of what we've been doing for the last several weeks and where we are. Number one, last week, we set up a small group with the Health Department, myself, and Clint Spurber, a couple of members of his staff, Bill Tomlinson and myself, and we're going to be communicating weekly regarding to determine what's going on with mitigation efforts, where we are as a community. I know we get a lot of information from the media, but I think it's important that when we're making decisions here for the school district and for our community, that we're getting the local information regarding and make decisions that are in the best interest of St. Lucy County, that are not in any way politically driven, no matter what side of the... No matter what side of the aisle you sit on, we want to make sure that we're protecting our students and our staff and our community. So we've got this committee together. Clint also is in close contact with the area hospitals, and he sends us that weekly update on Friday that I sent to the board as well as to the different cases and what's occurring in the community. So I think it's going to be a valuable asset for us as we move forward to make certain decisions. We, along with that, you know, we continue to monitor what the governor tells us, what the DOE is saying, and CDC guidelines and recommend, you know, looking at all the recommendations to make sure that we've got all the information that we have to make the best decisions for our school. So where we are right now in St. Lucy County is what's called Phase One, and I wanted to talk about what that effect is on the district. First off, I'll talk about the district office itself. And Bill's been working, has a draft plan out right now, which is a re-entry plan for employees and visitors for the district office. And as you can see, one of the main things that we're going to be doing is going through when our employees do return back, and some come and go intermittently. Right now, we're going to wait for the next couple of weeks since the county is kind of quote "open." We want to make sure and see if any new cases bubble up and what it's looking like in the emergency rooms and those kinds of things. So we figure that we will phase back into the district office more closely to Memorial Day and after Memorial Day. When we do that, we're going to have a screening station that's established up in the front, the front foyer, and this is for all visitors as well. And then we'll be doing the temperature check. We'll be requiring everyone that comes in to wear facial masks, especially when they're interacting with other members of... With other human staff members. When we're in our offices by ourselves, I don't think that's necessary. And we'll be following DOH and CDC guidelines while we're doing this. We are working on a plan of action as well for our school centers. We are in the process this last week and this week of training all of our health aides on protocols to coming into the school building so that the same thing will happen in our school centers, that everybody will be temperature-checked. We also have a questionnaire that's asked of folks that come in, particularly of visitors to the building regarding outside travel, if they have temperatures, those kinds of things. So we'll have specific guidelines in place for the district office as well as the school. We're training our health aides right now. We'll be training our administrators. We'll be training key staff members so that if there's a need, and there will be a need this summer, as well as possibly in the fall, for temperature checks, we've ordered two thermometers, two thermal thermometers for every one of our schools, and we'll probably have to order some more of those in the future as well. What we're doing really is kind of a phase-in of reopening the district. Again, we're being very, very cautious, and we're using this time right now for training so that in the fall, we'll have a lot of folks that will be trained in different areas to meet whatever issues that we're going to be facing. Right around the corner will be summer school, and I'm going to have Dr. Wild make a presentation. You should have received the hard copy of that. Chris delivered that, so everybody should have the hard copy of it. She's going to summarize that. She may not go slide by slide, but we want to talk about what we're doing and what we're looking at for summer school. And I think it's important that I stress that this is very, very fluid, and so we're trying to make sure that we have every contingency in place. I know some school districts have already announced that they're going to go strictly to a virtual summer school program. We want to have the option of going virtual or a hybrid model, which is kind of blended where students may be in front of teachers, small groups of students. When we get closer here to June and conferring with the Health Department and seeing where we are as a community, we'll be able to determine which direction we're going to go in. So we're just gonna, again, we're in a kind of a fluid pattern, so nothing... Everything that I'm saying is subject to some kind of change, but we're going to try to share with you all of the options that we have, making sure that we're keeping student safety on number one and teacher and employee safety as well, you know, the most important priority that we have. So I'm hoping that we'll be able to... Can Lydia, can you put the picture up? To be able to do that? Okay, perfect. I hope everybody can see this picture. This is a picture of Dan McCarthy Middle School in the parking lot, and it's kind of a sad picture, but it's also a happy picture. That's a parent under a tree getting... Being able to get our Wi-Fi to help her child do their lessons. And that's kind of the world we're in right now. And I think it's important that we never lose sight of that so that when we're making the decisions that we are making, and we're going to talk a little bit about grading and those kinds of things here in a few minutes after Helen's presentation. You know, our parents are working hard to do the best they can to help our children to learn. And so this mother should be commended. She's got the little... I'm not sure if it's a boy or girl, but they're under the tree over with the Wi-Fi, doing that young... Doing the students' lessons. So kudos to the parent for doing that and being able to get out. We've got our school buses in different sites with hotspots as well in the community. We're doing everything we can to reach our community. But, you know, somebody once said a picture's worth a thousand words, and I think that this picture right here is a priceless picture that kind of is the state of affairs that we're in as a country right now. And to the remarkable effort that's been done by our district and our staff to turn around to go to a virtual learning platform as quickly as we've done. Having said that, now, we're going to switch over, and I'm going to ask Dr. Wild to come on and talk a little bit about summer school and answer any questions that you would have. After that, then we will... We'll talk about the fall after the summer school and some of the options for the fall. Dr. Wild?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm working on sharing my screen. Can you all see it?
Yes.
Okay. As Mr. Gent said, I'm going to start with the summer school plan, and we did build out a plan that gives us options and is fluid, and we can go fully virtual or we can go to a blended approach, and this plan will allow us to do either. And I know you did receive it, so I'm going to go rather quickly. On the first slide here, we're really just trying to capture everything that we're doing in terms of summer school services for our elementary children. And the first part is about what we do to supplement learning and to address summer slide. And it does include our normal summer slide website, which we will continue, and we will add more resources again, once again, for this summer. We know our community camps utilize that resource. In addition, we are creating packets to be sent home with every child. This is not for students that we have targeted as potentially being at risk or behind. This is for all children. We know that the virtual learning can be challenging, so we are creating ELA and math packets for our elementary students to really refresh their learning as they get ready for next school year. So our plan is that they would do this prior to school starting back up, so it's four weeks' worth of lessons that they are to do at home and then bring back for their teacher. We're going to name this program. We're building it out right now, and we've already been talking to some of our community partners about the fact that students that are participating in any type of summer camp could also do these packets while they're there. In addition, we have some unique resources that we are providing to our ELL students, and I'll share that at the very end. Now, getting into our summer school, we are looking at making sure that we target at-risk students and target by school. So I'll get into the details in just one second. This is a four-week plan. It's Monday through Thursday, and our tentative plan is to start June 15th until July 9th. So the students, once the targeted students, once they complete whichever version of the summer school we're on, they would then go straight into the academic packets that we will be sending home, so they would actually have eight weeks of learning. So the virtual plan, of course, is a home-based learning project. We are going to record the lessons in ELA, English, and Math for all elementary grades, for students going into first through fifth, and we will have those teachers come into the TV studio and record the lessons. What's really exciting about it is the students will also be provided the accompanying curriculum, the workbooks to go with it, and the teacher will be having the students follow along in their printed materials. We're also going to be supplementing with online resources and working with the schools to try to provide incentives for the students to complete the work. What we're building into this plan, this is a Title I Summer School Plan, is that each student will receive an individual laptop. We have ordered laptops for this specific purpose. If they've already received a laptop, they will be able to keep the laptop they currently have. So this serves a dual purpose of also being able to increase our computer inventory, looking forward into our return-to-school plan. The lessons will also be supplemented by what is called Literacy Pro. This is a program that allows students to have a large library of high-interest books on the computer that we issue to them. So it'll be grade-level appropriate, high-interest, and it works sort of like a Kindle, and it looks like a Netflix screen. In addition, I do want to mention that these lessons that have been selected for ELA have social-emotional learning components built right in to the topics within the text. The students will complete these lessons every day. They're a half an hour each, so one hour per day. And with the virtual model, they will have teachers that will be able to monitor their work as well. Mention those things. I mentioned the prerecorded lessons that we'll be doing and all of the laptops, so I don't want to take too much time on that. So to call it a blended model, we have also added a face-to-face component for targeted grade levels. So we'll have some students, even within the blended model, that will do the full virtual program, and we'll have some students that will come to school. The idea here is to make sure that we follow all the CDC guidelines and Health Department guidelines and keep the groups very, very small and keep the total numbers of students on any given campus small. So the students will be assigned a class of 12... The teachers will be assigned a class of 12 students, and they will come on alternating days in groups of six. So it's essentially small-group instruction twice a week to go along with the virtual instruction. So on the days that they don't come, they will do the teacher video-directed lessons, and then the next day, when they come in and meet with their teacher, the teacher will be able to check their progress, make sure that they are keeping up, and address any gaps that they see with the students' learning. We've allocated the seats for the summer school. After gathering a lot of feedback from our principals and then presenting to all of our principals, everybody that would be involved in this, we've allocated schools based on, first of all, the overall school need, using school grade, size of school, and so forth. And then, in addition to that, we've asked the principals to target students who were already in our at-risk groups. This is unlike our previous summer camp, which was a literacy camp for third graders at risk of being retained. This is broader than that, so we're looking at students that were Tier Two and Tier Three already, which means they were struggling in ELA or Math. And then, in addition to that, they are free and reduced lunch. And then, in addition, what would be the category that would really put them at the top of the list is that they also were not as highly engaged in this fourth quarter virtual learning as we would have liked. So that's how the principals will be able to identify which students to offer the initial seats to. In our highest-need schools, and actually, you can see White City and Lakewood Park are in this group, as well as CA Moore, Longwood, St. Lucie Elementary, and Weatherby. And these six schools do have more seats, more students that will be able to take advantage of the blended model if we do move forward with the blended model. If we do the full virtual model, they will also have more students. That is because their schools have been targeted for turnaround, or they're near turnaround, or they've recently come out of it. In the case of Weatherby, they have an additional funding source. This is the last time that we can utilize those funds, so we wanted to do what we could to help the students. That pretty much repeats. Again, there's actually more teachers in this if we do all the models, but the teachers will be hired with an explanation as to the virtual or blended, depending on what our final decisions are. And we already talked about the 12-to-1 ratio. That's the summer school itself for elementary. We'll also be doing credit recovery in secondary grades like we always do. And we have also sent home backpacks to approximately 1,000 children who have been in the country less than two years. English is not their native language, and the backpacks are filled with books and tips for the parents to use and writing journals. And we will have teachers through our federal programs department, our Ecel department, that will also be supporting the learning of those children in the summer because we want to make sure that we get them on track with their English and their ELA and math skills. So we're really thrilled to be able to do that. Those backpacks are being shipped to their homes right now. And that is the end of the presentation regarding summer school. Mr. Gent, do you want to call for questions?
I'd like to open up for questions from the board members regarding summer school before we move on.
Helen, you did say four hours per day. It would take four days a week to go through the virtual summer school, and you did say it was all students. Am I correct?
No, thank you. The students for the virtual summer school, they are targeted based on how the students were doing at the end of the... In the fourth quarter and how they were doing prior to the fourth quarter. So that is based on whether or not the students were getting tiered interventions already, both of them, the virtual and the blended. And then, the number of seats are based on the status of the school. If the school is a D school or has been recently in turnaround, they have more seats than the rest of the schools. But there are students that will be able to participate from every single one of our K8s and elementaries.
Okay, the rest of the students will have the summer slide available to them.
The summer slide as well as the packets. Now, the four weeks of instruction that is ELA and Math, and that might have been what you were referring to, that is an at-home packet. That's for all students, the whole district.
Okay, packet but not virtual.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Helen.
You're welcome.
Helen.
Yes.
This is Carol. I wanted to ask a little bit in this process for kids that are ESC. What is the process? Is it different? Because I know some of the children struggle with language and special need. How are we supporting that? And by the way, this is extraordinary, the work that you've done. This is very encouraging.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Henson. Excellent question as well. So with ESC students, many of the students that will be participating in this might be ESC already because they're in Tier Two and Tier Three interventions. They've been identified as needing support, or they weren't engaged during the fourth quarter. So they could certainly be in this program. It would depend on their disability and what their learning challenges are. With these programs, we always build in whatever their accommodations are in their IEP if they are possible within the virtual learning environment. So that would be addressed, the extra time. So, that would be addressed, the extra time. The teacher would be able to meet one-on-one with them and teams because the teacher will have the time to meet those students' needs. Then, there's also the extended school year, which is different. That is written into their IEP and we're working with Bill on that as well because that would run simultaneously with this program. And so, that's a big part of the decision too as to whether or not we do blended or pure virtual. Because if we do blended, we have to do blended for all. And so, we would want to make sure that we can still keep to the limited size, limited number of students in a class and on a campus.
Thank you.
Bill, would you want to add anything, Bill Tomlinson?
Yeah, I just, I think Helen covered most of it. But the extended school year is an obligation for us, for children with disabilities. It's an actual extension of their current school year based on failure to meet the IEP goals or there is a worry about regression without this continuation of a school year. So, we're obligated to provide extended school year whether we provide any other type of summer program or not. And Helen and I are working collaboratively at this point in time to determine how we will meet the needs. If we are looking at bringing kids in for any type of blended environment, we have to make absolutely sure that we have real safe measures put in place because we deal with a lot of medically fragile children and that are already have a compromised immune systems. And we want to make absolutely sure if we were to go in that direction that we have everything in place to cover and protect those kids.
Thank you.
Other question? Yes. We, right now, are working with the Health Department. We want to make sure, we want to see pretty much the month of May what happens now that the county is open, quote "open." We want to see if there's a spike in any cases. We want to make sure that, you know, it's safe to do so. So, we're probably not going to pull the trigger until around Memorial Day. It could be even in the first week of June. We're just kind of in a holding pattern over the airport, if you will.
And Mr. Gent may also add, it is a Title I Summer School. We've submitted this plan to DOE for approval as well. It has to be approved. And so far, I think that may be why they've delayed it a couple of days is because they're looking at whether they're going to approve blended models or simply virtual models.
Wild was right.
Yes. Yes, thank you for that. You're correct, that is one of the concerns with the blended model as well. Unlike most years when we do it at two centers and put all of the students together and provide transportation, this model might have the advantage of being spread out. So, there could be a way for students to attend the school closest to their house. It's a little tricky with the staffing of it, but that would be our plan. If a student lived across the street from a school or if six students lived across the street from a school rather than the school they attend, of trying to put it nearest to their house to try to accommodate walkers because we know that would be a challenge for some.
Helen, will bus transportation be provided at all?
No, it's not part of this plan and I apologize. I think Troy was on mute or we lost his sound. No, Dr. Mills, while we're trying to get him back, transportation is not part of this plan. The summer school is at every school site. So, if the students don't live nearby, which could be an issue at Alapata, but Alapata has a really small population for this. Weatherby would be the school with the largest population that doesn't have as many walkers. So, we might have to make accommodations. It's on our list of challenges to overcome for sure.
We would be obligated to transport children with disabilities if that is an IEP-driven service. So, that would be an additional cost that would be involved with the program.
Thank you, Bill, for adding that, I appreciate it.
Let me go ahead and jump in. I know we kind of talked a little bit about it this morning. My concern is that a lot of these kids haven't had the human contact with their teachers over the last nine weeks. And some of them, that's the most important contact they make in their lives. So, we've got an ambitious goal here to try to do that. I think it's doable. The human connection to me is probably the most important thing over the grades themselves. It's that connection to make, see how the kids are doing. And the ones that are struggling, the last nine weeks marking period is a lot of testing and a lot of review for testing. There's still instruction that goes on. And so, we could be losing kids from literally spring break until August where they really haven't had any bona fide teacher in front of them except for a computer and online. And you saw the picture of some of the challenges that our community members have. So, this was an attempt really to reach out to some of those students that are having the most challenges, the ones that we haven't seen online to try to get them in. Again, it's kind of ambitious and, you know, I think it's doable. Cost has been very, very important as well. We're looking at our title dollars as we, and I'm going to talk about the budget in a few minutes as well. That's something that we've taken into consideration so that we think that we have the resources to do that. Administrators are on campuses anyway. This is a different world we're in, it looks different now. And so, we have to do things a little bit differently to try to meet the needs of these kids. So, that's why I had proposed it. And I, I'll be quiet now, I'm just answering your other questions.
It's Carol again. I'm looking at also the economic impact for the school system but also for the parents. I mean, I have real concern that some of the parents are dependent on us as a school system so to be able to go back to work. And of course, that's critical. And, you know, I don't look at us as babysitters necessarily, but I agree with you, Mr. Gent. The social-emotional piece is massive. And we have always been leaders, I think, in finding ways to do things outside the box. And I just, I tell you, I have such concerns right now about the ESC children that are in the care of parents that may be struggling that it would make me very happy to think that there are other eyes physically on some of these children that might be in a situation of being victimized in some way. And it just keeps going through my mind that we have become the teachers of the whole child. And if we don't have eyes on some of our children that have the most challenging problems, then I have concerns what's going to happen to some of these children. And we have to step up and not only with the academics but with the social-emotional as much as we can. And that's just how I feel about it, that I do have grave concern for some of our children, our most vulnerable children.
Thank you, Ms. Henson. Anyone else, any other questions on summer school? Okay, hearing none. Again, I want to thank Dr. Wild, I want to thank her team, I want to thank Bill Tomlinson and his team. You know, this is not perfect by any means. Nothing's been perfect the last nine weeks, but it has been a great attempt. And we, you know, have done a, have done a, just, I don't want to sound like the president and say we've done a, you know, a beautiful job, but we have done a remarkable job here in St. Lucie County with this. Not without kinks and not without challenges, but that's what you pay us for us is to get past those challenges. So, we'll know more, Mr. Ingersoll, probably in a couple of weeks, whether we can do the blended model or not. You know, it is, like I said, it is kind of an ambitious plan to try to get the kids in. And other districts have already announced that they're going to go totally virtual. And we may end up there, we just don't know yet. But as soon as we're ready to make a decision, I would think we would have one in two weeks. We're going to have another board meeting and a workshop and I'll talk about that at the end today as well. So, I would think that we would have pretty concrete details at that time for the board. If there's no more questions there, I want to kind of move on and talk a little bit about the fall. You received a return-to-school academic action plan and there's also a PowerPoint with that. And I'm just going to kind of talk about it for a few minutes. But this is a draft. It's kind of, nothing there is etched in stone. But we, again, have to look at every contingency and every plan and every option that's available to the school district. We really want to focus in on several things. Number one, the safety, again, as I mentioned, the safety of the students and staff, equity and access for our kids, quality of instruction, flexibility. We got to talk about money and then kind of mitigate the loss of revenue based upon enrollment and then make sure we've got buy-in. So, we don't know what the fall is going to look like yet and no one does. So, we're, you know, we're kind of working on a plan similar to summer school that if we have intermittent closures, you know, we'd be able to adjust to that. You know, we got to make sure that the social distancing is in place and looking about the organizational impact and how this would, you know, affect staffing, the contract language, transportation, food service. All of these have to come into play. We're currently doing edgenuity at the secondary level. We're probably going to eliminate that and go strictly to Canvas. I'm going to ask Helen to come on and explain the difference between the two platforms and why the rationale to go strictly with Canvas in the fall.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gent. So, you don't want me to go through the whole PowerPoint then, just talk about that?
Yeah.
Okay. The rationale, what we're building out is a K through 12 plan so that the curriculum follows our scope and sequence in all of those subjects. And our teachers will participate in putting that together using our resources. And that way, if we're in and out of school, you can easily go in and out of the program and it would align with the curriculum that the teachers do in the classroom. Canvas brings us additional benefits as well. It does sync grading with Skyward. We could use it for hospital-homebound students. We could use it for long-term substitutes and for individual students that have absences. Even if the absence is only one or two weeks in length, if we have a fully-aligned curriculum built in and built out in Canvas, we can utilize it that way. Our parents and teachers are all already familiar with it now because of this experience. We had a lot of experts already trained prior to this. There's also an app that goes along with it. So, parents, students can actually upload things easily on an app. So, there's just so many advantages to it. Edgenuity is a great program, but it is supplemental and we really only bought it to be temporary. It has to be customized to our scope and sequence. We're going to keep it for credit recovery at this point, but it doesn't lend itself for in and out of the curriculum. Once you start it, you must complete it. So, it's just different in that, in the way that it operates. So, this would allow us to use Skyward for progress reports, just give us a lot more continuity as a district. And that paired with Microsoft Teams is all we need to be able to virtually instruct and to go back and forth if needed.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Wild. I'm going to go through a couple of other things here regarding the fall. Social distancing is going to be key on this and, you know, we're going to continue to stress that with our students. You know, we're going to, some of our challenges, we have to look at transportation. We have to look at what are the guidelines? How do you put however many kids on a school bus and practice social distancing? It's almost impossible unless you reduce the number of students that are on the bus. We'll have to look at lunch schedules. We'll have to look at, do we eat in classrooms? Do we eat in areas, wide-open areas on school campuses? We need to look at the class configurations themselves regarding social distancing and how you get six feet apart and how many students could fit into a classroom with that. We'll be looking at the master schedule and being very creative with that on maybe some blended options. We'll be looking at class, classes themselves, particularly at the secondary level where you have class changes, where you go from one room to the next room. Even some of our elementary schools are departmentalized. You know, do the teachers move and the students remain in the classrooms? These are all things that we're working on right now. We would see probably no assemblies for the time being. We would be looking at guidelines for children to come into the building themselves. Do we have the capacity to do temperature checks for students? Do we, you know, will all children be wearing masks? Will staff be wearing masks? These are all things that we would be working closely with the Health Department regarding some of those answers and concerns as well as the state and the state Health Department and the CDC. You know, in the past, perfect attendance has been a big deal for many parents. You know, we're not going to, we're not going to stress that so much about that this year because it's going to be, that could be just not crude and I don't think in the times that we're in right now. We're going to encourage strong attendance, but I'm not sure, you know, that we're going to put a heavy emphasis on that. We'll be looking at different options of blended schedule options. One of the schedules could, you know, could be alternating days where half the student body comes to school one day, half comes the next day. And then, the day they're at home, they would have specific assignments. It could be with the computer, a blended model of instruction. We could look at alternating weeks where children come to school for one week, then they're home one week. And so, you're teaching half of the students one week and then the other half come in. Something that I really wouldn't want to consider too much is double sessions or split schedules because that becomes an expensive proposition with transportation. So, we're kind of, we're going to kind of focus on, you know, the traditional way of what we're doing right now with some options or looking at alternating day or an alternating week schedule. And, you know, a lot of these have challenges as well. And that's what we're pretty much focused on right now as far as the fall goes. So, there's really no specific answers regarding what the fall will look like. One of the other things is we're looking at different, we're looking at different academic calendars for the fall. You know, we've got the return-to-school date of August the 10th. We've got a calendar that shows the back-to-school date, the day after Labor Day. You know, we just don't know right now. Hopefully, we would be on a regular schedule and we could return on August the 10th. But we're looking at different options like that that we could present to the board this summer and also talk to our community about and different organizations within the school district. Dr. Wild, I kind of summarized the presentation. Is there any other key important points regarding the fall that you would like to, that I may have missed or you wanted to emphasize?
I think the only thing, without going into detail, is to make sure that we have options for, to meet the needs of all of our families so that if we need to do blended with some targeted students, we could. And that's another thing that Canvas helps us do. So, we're pretty much prepared for all circumstances. And like you said about the summer school plan, it's fluid. I also want to thank Kim J. Radnada and Liz Pruitt for all of their work on the summer school piece. I neglected to do that and they were integral to the plan. Thank you.
Any specific questions regarding the fall from the board members? And before we ask, if we can, the slide that's up right now, it's an academic plan, but that is just kind of a draft. Those are ideas, those are suggestions, those are things we're looking at. Nothing there is etched in stone, even though it would be a public record. We don't want the wrong information to go out to say, you know, we're going to this plan or that plan because we just don't know. But we're just trying to share with the board right now the different options that would be out there for us. Carol, Ms. Henson?
Yes, Mr. Gent, I just have a question about moving forward. I know you're meeting with other superintendents and looking at other plans and how we're going to do this in the state of Florida. And each county may have to do a little bit different depending on the dynamics of their county. I wanted to ask you, are there any problems with shortages for our district of San? I wanted to ask you, are there any problems with shortages for our district of sanitizers, masks, cleaning equipment? Because I know there are in the public shortages. Or do you feel confident that we can create, you know, a sanitary condition in all the schools?
Well, having the schools clean and sanitized is what we're doing now. There are shortages that are out there. There are shortages for hand sanitizer, just like what everybody's finding. Terrence and maintenance have been doing a good job of trying to get that. We're trying to stack up for the fall. But that is an area of concern that to make sure that we have that. Because one of the things, let's talk about, you know, where you could almost have breaks, hourly breaks, particularly at the younger levels and the elementary levels, you know, where children are, you know, washing their hands or using soap. So we do, it is, it is a challenge. And it's too soon to say right now, but the same shortages that are out there. We're trying to utilize different vendors. I'm talking to different community organizations as well to try to meet that need. I can assure you though, that when the children come back into the school buildings, that they'll be sanitized in the cleanest places in the county. And then we'll, you know, that will maintain that as far as the custodial supplies and those things. But I think what you're referring to maybe would be the personal hygiene products for the children themselves, hand sanitizer, soap, those kinds of things. Other questions regarding this fall? Yep?
Okay, go ahead.
Well, mine is, I guess, is in one way regarding the fall. But what I wanted to ask at this point in time is, do we have any data, current data on how the children are doing with the virtual learning? Knowing that we have households that definitely have challenges some more than others? Do we have any current data that we can look at now to see how we're doing virtually?
Okay, perfect timing. We did a survey to parents last, well, I know last week for sure, and Friday was the due date. So we've received back that information on Monday, and I have it in my hand. I just got it this morning, received it this morning. So we're going to look at that. One of the areas that was the highest was my child has technology at home, has the technology at home they need to participate in virtual learning, computer and wireless. That was one of the highest areas marked. Now, one of my concerns about the data that we're going to look at is that it's probably about 2,500 parents have responded out of, you know, 38,000. And maybe the parents that we're trying to reach haven't responded. So it's going to kind of, you know, it's going to tell us something. So in answer to your question, yes, we just received that the questions are, my child has the technology at home. I just read that one to you. My child is able to easily access digital learning materials. Another question, if my child is having technical issues with the district digital device or it's broken, I know how to contact to get it fixed. Teachers are available when they say they will be for assistance. That one came in very high. The work my child is expected to do is appropriate for his grade level. Child finds the coursework in Edgenuity engaging. That one wasn't so, that wasn't a real strong answer. My child finds the attendance process in Canvas easy to compete. That came in pretty high. I know that, I know that, I know how to see how my child is doing on their virtual schoolwork. That one was pretty high, kind of mixed. So we have about 10 questions. So we're going to review those. We also are doing questions for teachers, what's called a panorama survey, which will be the teacher's perception of how this is going and how they feel their children are doing. That, we won't have that information back in probably till next week. That's going out. And then we also have a survey that's going to our principals as well. So we're, Dr. Mills, we're trying to get all the input that we can from all the different groups that are there to help us in our decision-making for the summer and for the fall.
Mr. Jen, can we get a copy of that data that you have in your hands?
Yes, yes. Like I said, I just got it this morning, so we'll email that out to everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for fall? All right. I feel like I'm on a regular teams meeting with my cabinet staff. Carol?
Oh goodness. Well, thank you, Mr. Superintendent, for the report. The work that's going on with you and your team is just phenomenal. And on behalf of all of the board, we just send you our deep, deep appreciation. We're always keeping our students and families first and just really knocking it out of the park with the work that you're doing. So thank you for that. And board members, as we are still under the state of emergency, let me read a motion into place and then I'll entertain the motion.
Ms. Holly, Mr. Jen has a...
Let's jump right in there. As I say at home, I'm not done. I have a couple of more, I have a couple more reports to make to the board. I was just trying to finish up and wrap up the summer school and the fall. But I do want to just hit on a couple of other topics and then let the board...
Absolutely.
No, that's okay. Those were nice compliments you gave me. I should stop right there. So here we go. I want to talk about the budget. And, you know, the March sales tax collection for the state showed a 25% decline. April could be worse because March, we were still half and half of the folks that worked. April, pretty much everybody was at home. So it'll be interesting in May to see what April looks like. I know the CARES Act of $13.5 billion, of that, there'll be money coming to the state. Vern sent something out that said a CARES Act III, which I'm going to have, I want to get some more information on. There could be dollars coming in. But right now, based upon the original CARES Act, $512 million would come to the state. Of that, 9.5 would come to St. Lucie County, which represents about 2.5% of our operating budget. So it's a very, very small amount of money that would be welcome to be able to utilize. What we need to be focused on right now is watching sales tax collections. We need to be watching the federal government as far as congressional relief for schools. And also our state legislature, they have $4 billion in reserves. You know, so we're going to have to monitor that. If the legislature, if the board, if the legislature goes back, you know, normally, public education gets hit pretty hard. And so yesterday, the governor made some comments about, in a briefing in Fort Myers, that says that he doesn't see any need for state budget changes right now for the current fiscal year. We're good until July 1st. He's also went on to say that the FY '21 budget hasn't been sent to him yet. And they're continuing to monitor the revenue collections and anything coming from Washington. He feels like the floor is in good financial shape, but the level of economic recovery and federal assistance will be determined. So that's pretty much what I just said as well. If there is a special session, which I anticipate there probably will be one called, we would hope that it would be sooner than later as we get past July 1st. So what we're doing as a school district right now is really trying to roll over as many dollars as we can from this year to next year. We currently have a freeze in, a hiring freeze. Yesterday, we added it to teacher positions as well. But we'll be very careful and cognizant of that, that we want to make sure that we look at critical shortage areas like ESE instructors, you know, the core areas of the sciences or English or the high, the high-level mathematics, particularly in the secondary level. We'll keep a look at that, our green zone schools as well. So we're going to be monitoring our hires very, very carefully and spending our dollars very, very wisely as well as we move over into the next fiscal year. And we will workshop that either probably sometime in June with the board when we get a better picture of that. I already talked about calendars. I just want to mention graduations. Last week, I had an opportunity to meet with all of the senior class presidents to talk about your virtual graduation and that we're committed to doing an in-person graduation. We're currently looking at some different venues to possibly do something in late June or in July. With that comes some unique challenges. I know that our surrounding counties are doing that in Indian River and in Martin County. We may have to look at the, you know, we went out yesterday and at the fairgrounds and kind of looked at the seating arrangements because if we have our students sitting six feet apart and social distancing and then in the bleachers as well practicing that, we won't be able to fit graduating classes of larger than 480 out there and squeeze them in. So we're going to be looking at other options of the football stadiums as well, where almost the entire field could be filled with the students themselves. And, you know, we talked to the students about that they, and they were in agreement. We would limit it to two tickets per family. A lot of districts are looking at one car coming in with the graduate, with whoever the two people that get the tickets so that we can control it. So we're in the process of looking at an in-person graduation. Again, we would work closely with the health department and practicing social distancing. I would anticipate, and I'll talk to the board members, you know, that on the stage itself, it may just be the school principal, the superintendent or his representative and one board member. So that we would, and then maybe the board members would choose a graduation that they would want to attend. Or maybe we could have, you know, maybe a couple of board members. So these are things that we're looking at to make sure that we practice all the right distancings, but to give the children the opportunity to walk across the stage, to hear their name spoken. And so we'll continue to work on that. We talked about the surveys that already came up. This is, this week is State Mental Health Awareness Week, and there's a campaign that's going on. And so we want to... It's, what we have, it's Mental Health Awareness Month. The mental health, social, emotional behavior health of our kids is our top priority. And so we're doing, you know, we're doing kickoff awareness for the month. And so there'll be different activities that are going on throughout the month. And we'll watch the district website for that. One of the things that's going on right now, I want to talk about is current grading for the last marking period, the nine weeks. And as I showed you in the photograph, I think that this has been a unique time that we've done a good job of pivoting. And teachers have had to adjust to a new delivery method. But we want to make sure, and I think this is important to me, and I think it will be, the board will be okay with it, that we want to make sure that our, that the second semester grade, that no student will earn a second semester final grade that's lower than their third grade, the third quarter grade this school year. This is a one-time stipulation due to the newness of the virtual teaching. So what that is really is that in the fourth nine weeks, a kid, a student couldn't get a lower grade than he would have gotten for the third nine weeks. We also are looking at the second semester grade itself, that it would not be lower than the first grade. I'm going to let Dr. Wild come on and explain that because I may have said something incorrect there. Go ahead.
Yes, just slightly. It's not the fourth quarter grade. The semester average cannot be lower than the third quarter. So if your fourth quarter goes down, it won't lower your semester grade. The teachers will still enter the fourth quarter grade as earned, but it won't be to the detriment of anybody. So if their third quarter grade is higher, that will be their semester grade.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Wild. I kind of, I think it's important for equity reasons. We haven't really announced this publicly because we want to make sure that our kids are working as hard as they can and that our students are actively engaged as well as they can be engaged and that our teachers are engaged as well. Again, this has not just been a new learning process for our students, but this has had been unique to our instructors as well. And we want to be fair to the children, and we don't want to penalize the children. It is not perfect. There are some flaws within that. But I think we're going to err on the side of the child. We're going to err on the side of caution and take the child. And then we, you know, we have some programs over the summer to try to make sure that they can do some things that we've already mentioned. And then when we come back in the fall, something that I didn't mention, you know, there'll be some specific catch-up, if you will. Not, I know Dr. Wild is looking, looked kind of crazy there for a second, but that we are, you know, we'll do reviews and try to catch the children up. We'll also spend some circle times the first, you know, the first couple of weeks regarding kids talking about social, emotional issues and where they are and what's been happening in their lives. But the main thing is that, you know, our second semester and fourth quarter grades, we don't want to penalize the kids regarding that. And I think that we also got good news from the state that for teachers with certification issues, that that's going to be extended. And so we're working with those teachers on that. A lot of times, there's a lot of non-reappoints because of certification issues. So some of that'll give us a little bit of extra time for our teachers regarding that. And then finally, I think it's finally that, all right, we have a four-day work week this summer. That'll become effective, just as we've done the last several summers. That'll become effective June the 8th. And then when we meet again in two weeks, we will meet again. It will be a voting board meeting. We will have some information regarding the sale of the orange blossom. We'll also be dealing with the charter school, the charter, Renaissance Charter, and taking formal action on that. I'll be contacting the board members over the next two weeks and talking to you specifically regarding that and answering some of your questions that we have. Now, Mrs. Holly, I think I have completed this. I'm sorry that it took so long, but I think it was so important that we make sure that we bring you up to date on everything that's going on in the school district and are adequately able to answer all of your questions. So thank you.
Well, you're absolutely right, Mr. Jen. It is vitally important, and we appreciate the thoroughness that you're keeping us up to date with, not only in our meetings, but as things go on. And my apologies again for cutting you off earlier. That was, it's difficult when I can't see what's happening to know, to catch on the cues. But at this point, we, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I just said, no problem. We're good.
Okay, thanks. All right, board members, I will read this into the record, and then I'll entertain a motion in a second, and we'll vote on it. Confirming, approving, and ratifying all of the superintendent's actions taken during the COVID-19 public health emergency for the period covered by his report and authorizing the superintendent to continue such actions for so long as the governor's emergency declaration remains in effect. And we are all aware that that has now been extended into the month of July. So board members, I would entertain a motion to accept this reading into the record.
Motion, motion?
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Do I have a second?
Second, hi Carol.
Thank you, Ms. Elson. We have the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much, board members. Mr. Harold, do you have an attorney report for us today?
No item, Madam Chair, thank you.
Well, thank you for being with us. We appreciate your leadership through all of these times as well. As we've said many times, it's uncharted territory. So your expertise in leading us is much appreciated. School board members, we will move now to reports. I'm not sure that everyone has a microphone. So I will just begin to my normal left with Mr. Ingersoll. Are you available for a report? Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. Dr. Mills?
Yes, I just wanted to thank the Education Foundation for the laptops that they have, the money they raised for the school district to have laptops. I have the privilege of being on that board and getting the inside scoop of what it takes to do what they do and for their insight on, you know, like we said, everything is, things are different for all of us now. And for them to have the, be so relevant at this time, to have the insight of doing something that is unique and outside of what they normally do and raising that $50,000 in such a short time and providing 132 laptops. I just want the Education Foundation to know that the board really does appreciate their hard effort and their commitment. And it just goes to show what can be done when we all pull together. I also want to thank the parents and the teachers and the administrators for what you are doing to make a difference in this COVID virus time that we're living in. And that is it for my report.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Ms. Elson?
Yes, um, yes. And I echo what Dr. Mills has said. And, you know, I want to give a shout out to all the administrators and all the people that are doing such hard and unusual work that we, this is, everything is so new. And I'm appreciative of the leadership. Getting some feedback, okay. One thing I wanted to mention was, for our teachers, this is a heavy lift. And I'm not sure that people in the community understand what is entailed for each and every one of our teaching staff. My son-in-law is a high school teacher, and I had the opportunity to watch... My son-in-law is a high school teacher and I had the opportunity to watch with his maybe 130, 140 students what the expectations are to individually follow along with each student and their work and their testing. And I'm just so impressed by our teaching staff and how they have had to learn, to do things in such a different way. It's just so many thank yous to everyone that has learned, we have all learned a new language and I'm very impressed. And I know Helen, you and your team, along with Bill Tomlinson and that group are doing some really incredible work and I really appreciate the follow-up on our most vulnerable students. So thank you to everyone, along with Mr. Gent and his leadership and all the work that Terrence has, extra work Terrence has done. So thank you to all of you.
Ms. Hensley? Thank you, Ms. Hensley. And I just want to echo again our deep appreciation for St. Lucie County, for St. Lucie Public Schools, for all the work that our team is doing, our parents, our students. It's, it's really just phenomenal, the way everyone is coming together. And of course, we realize there are glitches here and there and I appreciate everyone's patience as we work through those glitches and we find ways to reach the students that are a little more difficult to reach. We will. It is our goal and it always has been and will continue to be to serve all of the students of St. Lucie County in the best way that we possibly can. I am not aware of any unscheduled speakers. Is that correct? With no visibility, I'm not sure if there's anyone in the boardroom that wishes to speak.
There are, there are unscheduled speakers, Madam Chair. I just needed one more, I just had a couple more announcements. They're not, the board doesn't need to vote on them. I just had so much that I left some of it off.
Okay, no problem then. But we are correct then, there will be no unscheduled speakers? We will go back then to Mr. Superintendent.
Okay. I just want to let you know, we've served over 277,000 meals to our students. And as far as the census goes, we want to continue, we're, we're doing a blast to make sure that folks sign up for the census. Currently, right now, the self-response rate of St. Lucie County, we are number 16 in the state at over 57% of our citizens have, have done that. And then this Friday at 7 o'clock, our music students, I don't know if you can hear the music, Lean on Me, but our teachers and some of our students are going to be doing a, secondary music students are going to be playing and singing Lean on Me in their yards. And so you may hear some of our students out there sharing the love and they're doing this really just to honor everybody that's done so much for the pandemic, our first responders, our community members. So we're going to try to get all that, that information together and, and post it, but I think it'll be a really neat, I think it's going to be one of those unique things that communities are doing. And I appreciate our schools and our students and our teachers for doing that this Friday at 7 o'clock. And now I'm finished. Thank you.
And we'll try to make ourselves someplace where we can hear the singing going on. That, that's phenomenal. I really like that. Okay, I see no other business to come before us. Thank you all for your participation. It was a good, good meeting and we appreciate again all the efforts of everyone. So take care until we meet again and we are adjourned.